I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Trustee Marasek?
Here.
Trustee Ben?
Here.
All right, there's a quorum this evening. We'll start off the evening as usual with our public participation. If there's any member of the public that's here this evening that wishes to address the board on an item that's not related to the agenda or related, if you're a resident, now would be the opportunity. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and move on to items for discussion this evening. The proposed firefighter training facility near the Oswego Fire Station Number Three. And with that, I will turn it over to Planner Chipman for a brief summary.
Thank you very much, President Brawley. Before you this evening, and Jeff, if you could please go to the third PDF, the map.
The map?
Sorry.
That one?
There you go.
All right.
Before you this evening is a preliminary proposal by the Oswego Fire Protection District to locate a training facility in approximately this location next to Fire Station Three, which, as you may be aware of, is off of Orchard Road and then Cow Pillar is on the other side. Now, the Fire Protection District is asking not only our interest in the project, but also for, to place this on some of the village's land. So whether that be through a long-term lease or deeding over the property to them, that can be discussed here tonight. That's one of the main items that I would like to discuss with you. And secondly, I would also like to bring to the board's attention their preliminary proposal of the unit and ask what the board thinks of aesthetics. Now, the Fire Protection District received a grant for this station, for this training facility, and they intend to use the vast majority of the grant for the station itself. They also intend to open this training facility up to other regional neighbors. Now, tonight I do have both Chief Knizer from the Oswego Fire Protection District and a member of their board, Jason Bragg, here, if you have any questions or wish for them Would you like?
Certainly. Yeah, you guys. Sorry, I didn't think you stopped. Do you know why we own the property and where our intentions are in the future?
We've got a couple of speaking points and I'm the kind of guy that has to work off of notes. So anyway, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address you guys tonight and talk to you about our project. I'll just recap a couple of things, just a quick little history on the project. We did receive from the state of Illinois a $200,000 capital improvement grant. On top of that, we received an additional $34,000 grant from the, our workman's comp provider company, only public risk. And we're expecting about another $30,000 plus in grant money to receive prior to this construction, too. That money does not cover the entire cost of this project, but that money does provide for the structure. It's our intent to use our capital line item to do the infrastructure work, the concrete, the asphalt, the fences, the shrubbery, whatever it is you folks require of us, that's going to come out of one of our existing line items. The money in that line item largely comes from impact fees, transition fees, I'm not sure what you guys call it, but through you, Oswego Fire Department does receive impact fees, and it's our intention, and I'm sure it's your desire, that we reinvest that money in the city limits of Montgomery. And we've done that when we built the fire station, and we're wanting to do that now when we build the training facility in your community. The reason why we picked the Station Three location is, I'm sure you're all aware, there's currently five fire protection districts that protect the city limits of Montgomery. This location serves the best for all five fire districts. This is the sort of thing that every fire district don't build. You know, we need, you need one, if we build one here, then we don't need to build one, Tommy Myers don't need to build one, Kunkel don't need to build one. You know, we can all share this facility, and Station Three is the closest one. You know, I have a station in the city limits of Plainfield, to build it there doesn't help Chief Myers, and it doesn't help Chief Kunkel. So that's one of the reasons why we wanted to build the thing there. In addition, there's a benefit to fire departments training together, because we do, on big calls, interact on mutual aid and automatic aid, and if we practice like we play, you know, then we can get the job done more efficiently, we learn each other's rhythms, we understand each other's policies, and we get to know one another, and it works better. So there'll be a series of joint trainings where we'll train with other agencies, there'll be night trainings, there'll be trainings when it's cold, there'll be trainings when it's hot. The training facility that we're talking about doesn't burn, we're not burning car tires in it. You know, we're burning, you know, there's EPA and NFPA standards, we'll burn clean burning straw, and we'll burn wood pallets, and that's really all we burn. It's not a huge inferno, it's a small controlled fire inside the structure that really just smokes the thing up. We're not trying to, you know, burn a gear off anybody or melt their helmet, we're really just trying to create real smoke in real fire conditions so that we can train. I don't think anybody can argue that the community wants well-trained, certified, competent, qualified firefighters, and the way you do that is you put them in real smoke. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing it there. One of the other reasons why we want to build the building, it's that Station Three's location is that, is zoned as an industrial park. I realize it's very visible from Orchard Road right now, but I'm sure it's not your desire that it stays that way forever. You'd like to build out that industrial park, at which time the station will be not so visible from the subdivisions in the area and from traffic on Orchard Road. The picture that you see there, even though it's dark, it's, that's not a pretty training facility. There's pretty training facilities and there's not so pretty training facilities. The one that we intend on building won't be that big, it won't be that industrial-looking. It will be built with shipping containers, but they'll be put together in a fashion that resembles mostly a single-family home. That's kind of the bread and butter of what the fire service does. You know, we don't really burn, we don't have a lot of six-story structure fire, so we don't need to build a six-story training facility. The industry as a whole has transitioned to training, or to building these types of training facilities, these shipping containers, because they're very versatile, they're very affordable, and on top of being used for the structural firefighting, there's components to it where we can practice confined space rescue and trench rescue and elevated rescue. There's components to it, which is what, really what makes the thing so darn expensive. You know, you look at those and you go, how's that a quarter of a million dollars? Well, it is and then some. So I've been asked about the permanency of the structure, you know, is it, you know, it's not built on a foundation and it don't have a basement. You can think of it kind of like a residential shed. I have one in my backyard, I put it there 20 years ago, and when I did it 20 years ago, I had no intention on moving it anytime soon. And as my shed needs maintenance, I maintenance it, and if my shed needs to be replaced, I'll replace it. My shed's not a permanent structure, but by God, it's going to be there for a long, long time, you know, and that's kind of what this is. You can say it's not a permanent structure, but you just can't pick it up and move it. The land for this project that we're looking for works for us in a lot of ways. One is that it's contiguous with Station Three's property, and I don't know how many of you are on the board back when the Station Three property kind of came to be, when you guys were annexing that into the city, and there was a couple of different property owners, and you were working with both of them, getting land donated, and that parcel of land that is yours and that parcel of land that is mine started out life being all yours. And, you know, you deeded us off that portion that we built the fire station on, and we consumed all of it. I mean, you can see that there's very little grass that needs to be mowed, which is why we make a mow your yard, because the fire department's been maintaining that, they fertilize it, they weed it, they mow it, and they keep it looking nice, because we don't have a lot of our own grass, we pretty much consumed the whole piece of land that we got from you folks. You can see the red outline, that's the actual parcel of land that we need, it's to the backside of the lot, away from the power lines and away from the detention pond. It's really not that big. I did provide, I thought I provided the dimensions of that, it can't be, is it 50 by 100, maybe?
Yeah, I believe that, Pete, do you have that? Or actually, I have it here.
175 by 60.
Yeah, I've got the other one.
Thank you. Yes, 175 feet by 60 feet.
Okay, I like.
That's for the pad, it says the facility's 55 by 24.
We're talking a very small amount of land, so, and of course, the fire district understands that we need to work with you folks, you're going to want a fence, you're going to want some screening, you're going to want some foliage. We understand it, we get it, we're happy to do all that, but I really can't do anything until I, you know, we can get some kind of a thing worked out with you folks and the land, so. I've also been asked by other people about, you know, why build this as opposed to what Naperville did on Route 59? You know, that's a nice-looking tower. Well, in 1988, when they built that tower, they called that a tower, it was over $2 million in 1988. There's a big difference between, you know, $2 million in 1988 versus $250,000 in 2014. It's a kind of structure that's very high in maintenance, they spend $60,000 a year maintaining it with the brick and the tuck pointing and the spouting of the concrete from the fires they light in it. It's a very expensive way to train a firefighter, and if you were to ask them, they wouldn't do it that way again. The city of Chicago at the Fire Academy, back when building training towers was the way to go, they built a very nice, very elaborate, very expensive training tower, and if you go to the academy now, sitting right next to that expensive tower, it is a series of cans, shipping containers, just like what I want, because it's functionally more, use better English than more better, but it's functionally better, in the sense that you can put all these accessories in it for the confined space, the trench rescue, the above, the below grade rescue, and all those sort of things. So the, I understand there might be a concern with the detention, you know, can the property support another hunk of concrete on it? I went to Station Three this morning at shift change, talked to the outgoing shift and the ongoing shift, who've been there for years, and have you ever seen water in there? Never, no one's ever seen water. After a torrential rain, it might have a soggy bottom for a day or so. It's not really, you know, I don't think I'd be stressing or overexerting the capacity of the detention by putting, you know, 170 feet by 60 feet of concrete alongside of it. Your engineers are certainly, you know, the ones to ask that specifically, but does anybody have any questions for me specifically? I know I went through it rather quickly and kind of sporadically, but...
I have one. Because the pictures that we received show these as shipping containers.
That's really what...
They're that burgundy, kind of rusty aesthetically. Would there be a plan to have them painted to...
There's actually a company, there's a couple of companies, one that we would probably prefer to work with over the other, that builds these for fire departments, and when they're done, when they're done cutting and welding, the whole thing is painted. The one container that actually does have live fire is sprayed with an insulation so that when the first fire we light, don't turn the outside of the container black. You know, it's, this is, this is well-thought-out, well-designed, well-engineered, and it can be made aesthetically pleasing. You don't need to see the end where there's the bay doors on the end of it, like off of a back of a semi. In fact, they can be taken off if we need to, you know. They cut in windows, they cut in doors, and then the whole thing is completely painted with a durable paint that we power wash from time to time as the structure needs it. But the structure really don't get that bad-looking, because like I said, we burn straw, and we burn a little bit at a time, we just really burn enough to make smoke. You know, we're not looking to make the thing 1,000 degrees, so.
Okay. Any other questions to the chief?
No, I'm just glad that your board has decided to include all five of our districts in Montgomery, because it's something that's, like you said, you probably could easily get land somewhere around Plainfield or something, where this way, all five of the fire departments that represent Montgomery can use it.
Right. We have a very good working relationship with all those districts, and, you know, they'll all be allowed to use it independently and along with us jointly, so it'll be a big benefit for everybody, and it'll really help, you know, create, you know, more diversified and well-trained firefighters everywhere, so.
Okay. What's the timeline?
The timeline's kind of based on you. I have, I have the $34,000 grant, I'm anticipating a $30,000 grant. When I called Tom Cross's office and talked to them about the time, because I have seven trustees meeting, I'm like, when can I tell my trustees I might be getting a $200,000 grant? You know, they really don't know, it's the state. I'm allowed to build it, and they reimburse me, I mean, like I gotta have the money, you know, from them to do it, I can't do it without it. I mean, my board's not going to just give me $200,000 if I can't say, listen, I'm going to give it back to you. If you front it, I'll get it back to you. I might be able to convince them of that. And if, you know, we get through this process rather quickly, I'd do it, I'd do it as soon as your board and my board lets me, you know, so that's my timeline, so.
Couple of questions and a couple of comments, if I may. This is exciting, it looks to be a real valuable community asset and a regional asset for the area to have this in place. The first question would be, could we discuss a possible police use for this facility as well?
Absolutely. My police chief in Oswego, Dwight Baird, I did talk to him, and I said, if I build this, or if we get to build this, would there be a value to law enforcement? And he got kind of excited about it, too. You know, when we have, when we get those random houses that are in the way of construction, and we get the opportunity to train them and burn them down, you know, the police like to show up and kick in the doors and, you know, they're splash bangs, flash bangs, and, you know, wrestle around and, you know, do their share of damage, you know, to the building, where this is kind of indestructible, and we'd be happy to let them do that, that would be fine, you know, so, yeah, absolutely, we'd let them use it.
This, I can't think, may be more of a comment, but currently, the facility would be very visible from Orchard, and it might behoove us to put up some signage so people understand what they're seeing, so we don't get, oh my God, there's a fire next to a cat on a regular basis. And I think in the vein of it being a community asset, it wouldn't be bad for us to promote the fact that that's a regional training facility anyway.
Right, yeah, and as far as signage, that'd be easy. Like I said, I'm open to really whatever you want. If you want, when I get it done, if you want it painted camouflage, I'll paint it camouflage. You know, if you want, whatever, whatever it is you guys want, you want a six-foot fence, you want an eight-foot fence, you tell me and I'll do it, you know, so.
How often a month would you anticipate some kind of activity?
Well, I can't speak for the other departments, so I really couldn't give you a good handle on that. All firefighters need by statute 20 hours of live firefighter, live firefighter training a year. That's on top of everything else that they do, but actually, like, with your air pack on, with your gear on, in smoke and in heat, it's 20 hours. I have four stations and 100 firefighters. It's going to take, you know, it'll take many days, you know, I mean, I'm not saying three days a week, I'm saying three days, I'm saying five days, five days a month, I don't know, I really don't know. And maybe, maybe, maybe five days a month with everybody, you know, because you can get a lot of training done in a day, so.
Yes.
It's not going to be used every day, not going to be used every day by any stretch of the imagination, so.
This combined question may be for community development and fire. The neighbors to this property, will they have an opportunity to offer any concerns or comments they may have as we move ahead with this, or this is kind of an unusual land application, although it is an industrial zone property?
We can certainly notify them when, what we typically do with a process like this is we go through plan commission, then back to board with a kind of a final site plan, so we can notify them at that time.
This would require special use?
I need to double-check on the zoning ordinance, but I believe it would require either some form of special use or plan commission action.
Last question.
Go ahead.
Do you have, would you be amenable to a long-term lease arrangement, or is ownership of the property important to you for some reason?
You know, like I touched on earlier, that, you know, it started out life being, you know, one piece of property that, you know, you said here, fire department, this will be yours and this will be ours, and I think once upon a time, I think you maybe, I was told many years ago that you were going to put a water tower on it, but, you know, obviously that's not necessary anymore. I think I'd like to, I think I'd like to control my destiny, you know, I would prefer that the land be deeded to the department more so than a long-term lease. My preference. I'm not saying that my board wouldn't be amiable to that, but if you ask Rick, Rick would rather have property, so.
The mutual aid agreements that your organization has been kind enough to sign with Montgomery, are those biennial agreements, or what terms do those typically have?
I'm sorry, you have to...
Am I using the wrong phrase?
I really didn't understand.
The mutual aid agreements between your Oswego Fire Department and Montgomery?
Right. Well, there's two kinds of agreements, there's mutual aid, which is really, when any community is stricken, they specifically have to ask, and we'll specifically come, and then there's automatic aid, which is, which is a document and which is an agreement that means, in this particular geographic area, for this type of call, we'll send this and this, and then this type of call, we'll send that and that. It's, it is a written document, it is an agreement between the two participating fire protection districts. We provide, I mean, we just did, you know, the statistics for my board for the ending calendar year, and we provided, you know, Oswego Fire Department, particularly Station Three, provided, you know, responses into the city limits of Montgomery, either through Sugar Grove or through Montgomery, hundreds of times.
Yes.
In 2013, and we're happy to do it, and we're going to continue to do it, that's a non-issue, so. Even if you tell me no, I'll keep doing it.
All right.
Before the board this evening, one of the items that we'd like direction on would be whether you're interested in leasing the property, selling the property, or deeding the property over, or deeding a portion of the property over, which would still allow the village to use the southern portion for any number of things in the future, whether that be a small public works satellite site, water tower treatment facility, or anything else that the board deems...
A point of information, I'm under the impression, and if I'm speaking out of school, I apologize, I'm under the impression when you develop the industrial park, that detention will go away, you'll have a detention designed for the entire industrial park, correct? So you mean, that could be filled in and something could be built on it, you know, for you folks down road, so.
And that's true to the best of my knowledge, so, is that we would be able to potentially move that detention facility to a more regional facility.
It doesn't look like it's a very large detention basin right now. Is that just for the fire district, or the fire site right now, the detention is detaining your site only?
I believe it was originally engineered to accommodate the hard surface that the station and its asphalt created, yes.
Okay.
That's correct, and it is intended to be replaced once there's a unified development on the site.
So we would still have, and one of my concerns is, what was our intention with the property when we retained ownership of that portion of it, obviously, maybe for a water tower, water treatment, like we said, so we would still have that option in the future, whether or not we leased the parcel to you or sold it, we'd still have the detention basin, that if this develops, then we could...
Basically, you know, two-thirds or three-quarters of that property could stay yours, I just need that flat space in the back.
Pete, what are the possibilities of a water tower there?
I don't believe we ever contemplated a water tower for the site, but we did contemplate a public works use, and that was intended to be used for that site. There's an adjacent parcel that can't be seen on that exhibit that links, so it's larger than that, and there was, when you combined that, it was fairly, you know, it was a good size, and I think we talked about, you know, whether they had like a salt dome there or something to that effect.
I think we had salt places all over town, with all these developments, every place we kept a little bit for salt.
So, yeah, I mean, that was, I think the original intent was to have some public workspace available to us.
Good. Any other comments from the board this evening? I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate you bringing that in Montgomery industrially-zoned area, I don't think, you know, we're going to have a whole lot of resident complaints about it, you might have some calls, wondering what the smoke is from that building now and again, but I did want to say, I don't want to see us get out of control with landscape requirements and facade improvements on the building, because someday it's going to be hidden from the road, more or less, in an industrial area, so I just, I appreciate what you guys have done, it sounds like the board is definitely agreeable to having you guys move forward with this, and from this point, I suppose, you and staff can kind of work out the details on it.
Does the board have a preference, it means your preference to deed them that portion and keep the other portion for ourselves, or is that what the board's good with?
Yeah, the only... I think it would play, play well for us to deed the property over as part of our recent TIF action, and with making commitment to help support Montgomery Country Fire District. This would help, because it's going to help them with training facilities, so this would work well to help bolster that, you know, we're kind of stepping up and saying, we're going to step up and help with this.
I think residents are right, would question maybe if it was just used by you, and we're giving it just to you, but if we're giving it to all five, I mean, that's what we started out back in the old boards, remember, Pete, we wanted to make sure everybody was equal, and in this case, it can be equal.
Right.
Okay. Does that sound good?
And then the aesthetics, everybody's good with what they've proposed, or do you want us, go ahead.
Could you please pull up, there's another PDF exhibit? Yes, the second one, second PDF, and scroll down a little bit, these are just some examples. I did have one that was of a similar nature that was painted, that is one, that is an example from Alsip. I believe, if the, please correct me if I'm wrong, chief, that what the chief is looking at would be maybe a little shorter than that, and would have a pitch roof on one portion to look a little bit more like a house, or at least act a little more like a house in case they need to get on a pitch roof.
I would venture to say that what ours will look like is something between that one and the first one, you know, not, I mean, not the one above, that's the Naperville $2 million one, I'm not on board with that, but, you know.
Something between that one and...
And that one, you know, that one's, you know, that one has an industrial look to it, you know, it's, we actually visited that one, that one's in Romeo Ville. There's a training academy in Romeo Ville where they, where they actually, you know, fire departments send cadets and pay a fee, and so they're training in that one all the time, and it's a little more, you know, than what we need, you know, it's the old, the three bears saying, this one's too big, this one's too small, this one's just right, you know, that one's too small, that one's too big, I'll build one just right, so.
As long as the color scheme can be kind of neutral, you know, not the big burgundy one, but something that'll be kind of blend in more aesthetically pleasing.
And it will be well-maintained, and we do want a fence, because there, you know, even though there's going to be a little storage shed down, if you notice that off to the left, you know, there might be, you know, like someday where there's a stack of pallets or, you know, a random bale of straw or something, where, you know, that wouldn't be actually appealing to sight. And my board, when I took them to Romeo Ville, when they got out of the truck, they said, you know, that's, it looked messy, and there's no way my site will be messy, so I got a board that won't let me let it be messy, so.
Excellent.
Just one more question for the board, would it be, for the purpose of possibly giving the chief some direction, would it be nice to try to mimic some of the color of his current station? Would that be something that you'd be looking for?
It could match the green roof line of the structure, or it could be painted, you know, to match the brownish, because the building itself, when you, the closer you get to it, it's many colors of brown.
I was going to say, you probably could ask everybody here what color the station is right now, nobody would know, it's so far away, so, you know, to me, it's, yeah, just make, like you say, make it look nice and...
And in the end of the day, we all answer to the same residence anyway, so you're not going to do anything that...
No hot pink.
There you go.
Excellent. You have direction, Chair?
Do you have a direction? Do we have direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Trustee Bragg, thank you. Good to see you. All right, that will move on to the second item for discussion this evening, which is the AT&amp;T leases and Construction Plan. And with that, I'll ask Director of Public Works, Mike Poobens, for a summary.
Thank you, President Brawley. Tonight, I have just an update for you. I'd hope to have construction plans and other designs for your review. The process is not moving quite that quickly. As you remember, AT&amp;T had approached us about putting cell facilities at both the Well Aid Site, which is on Woboncia Avenue, and the Police Department Site. So, working with them, we had encouraged them, and they had agreed to look into constructing a monopole, which they would then deed to the village, et cetera. So, just briefly, we've submitted our comments. They'd submitted draft plans and leases to us. We submitted our comments back to them. We have not had a response on the lease language. I did receive comments and revisions to the Civic Center, the Police Department Site. Some of our comments were incorporated, some weren't, so we're working with them to resolve that. So, we'll continue with the process on both sites, and I hope to have something ready for our decision, discussion, decision by the end of February, early March. As a side note, Verizon has also since contacted us, and they are also interested in participating, at least building facilities at the Woboncia Site. I haven't talked to them yet. We'll certainly give them the opportunity to build the Civic Center Site also. But the long-term plan, if you'll remember, was to construct a site that could host multiple cell carriers, possibly five per monopole, and then generate, quite honestly, generate revenue for the village, so. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I didn't summarize.
Good. If you think of any questions, you can contact...
Please.
About that. Meanwhile, okay. Move forward to the discussion of the waiver of bid for mowing services for this coming year. And again, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
In 2013, the village hired the Brickman Group to perform our landscape maintenance services contract. You'll remember, that contract generally covered mowing and trimming, tree and shrub pruning, weed control, landscape bed maintenance, entry monument maintenance, and other services on both village-owned properties and the SSA properties that the village maintains. In 2013, we awarded that contract for $94,622 to Brickman. They have offered an extension of that same contract to us for the upcoming year in the sum of $99,982. That's a $5,360 increase, or 5.7%. After reviewing their offer, I would recommend acceptance of that extension offer. In part, our, our range of bids last year went from just under $92,000 to a high of $134,500. In previous year's bids, we've had high-end bids that have gone much higher than that. So this extension offer represents a number that's in the lower 20% of our most recent bid range. So, to me, that means that their extension offer is reasonable based on our, our bid history. Brickman's work at the beginning of the year was okay. They did work quite well with Ed Path and myself, and by the end of the year, we thought they were doing a very good job. So we think part of that was just learning the contract and learning the locations and figuring out their crew sizes. So their, their quality did improve throughout the year to a point where at the end, we were very pleased with their performance. So I've discussed this with Ed Path, our arborist. He also helps me with this contract. He supports bringing Brickman back. So, again, our recommendation will be to accept their extension offer. If you're so inclined to do that, I'll bring back a formal agenda item next week to waive bid and approve an extension agreement with Brickman for the 2014 Landscape Services Contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments.
Mike? Any comments?
Question, if I may.
Please.
Does this include the SSA mowings?
Yes.
The firm that we had in 2012 was a different company?
Yes.
Brickman started in 2013?
Brickman was 2013. We had a different company in 2012.
I think that's the one where I'm remembering a lot of complaints.
They were actually, the company we hired in 2012 was the low, the lowest bidder by a few thousand dollars, maybe $2,000. They failed to submit all the bid requirements, and based on that and their performance history, I made the recommendation to award to Brickman last year.
Just wanted to make sure I had that clear in my own mind.
Right.
Excellent.
What does Brickman do? What all does he do? This property here?
Does the village hall. Most of the properties are village properties that we've obtained since probably the mid-2000s, so Police Department, this property, well sites, some of the tower sites, and then our staff still maintains some of the traditional properties that they, we've always mowed, Parkview lots, that type of thing.
Who does all the work in Parkview Estates with all the property the village owns out there?
Montgomery Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Kenny?
Yeah, I think this has always been a problem with the qualifications of the bid and, and actually the performance too. And I think we finally found somebody by the end of the year that could finally do a good job. Rather than bid it with some guy that has two lawn mowers and wants to just try to get in business, these guys have proved themselves, I think, finally.
And we, some of you may recall, early on, we had to, we ended up firing a company because of that. And we've learned a lot over the years just in, in how to write the bid specifications, and have modified it quite a bit since that first one to try to, you know, not to eliminate anyone, but to raise the standard for the type of equipment. You have to have your ability to mow to a certain standard, et cetera. So, so we think we've eliminated a lot of the bidders who were just unqualified, either through experience or lack of equipment or staff or training. But nonetheless, yeah, the bid process is no guarantee that you're going to get all good bidders.
We talk a lot about bidding things out, going out for bid, and I think that while that's an important function of what we do, bidding out for the sake of bidding something out every year, I think maybe doesn't quite get, accomplish what you want. So I think in this situation where we've had one year, they've been trained to how we like things, staff's happy, you know, I'm not getting any opposition to waiving the bid for this year. I think I said the same thing when previous contracts have come up. You know, this is a one-year extension of the contract. Honestly, I'm slightly uncomfortable with giving them a 5% raise in the one year. I just think that it's, it reads like it's a high, you know, a nice pay increase for somebody, the 5%, but maybe that's something you can negotiate with them.
Could certainly do that. And I understand what you're saying. I think you hit on a key phrase. It reads that way, but there's a lot of things that we, quite honestly, don't know about the bidding climate, how they bid it last year. Again, our bid history shows that, that some vendors thought this contract was worth much, much more, so.
Okay.
So it's important to look at that percentage, but don't necessarily rely on it as the only measurement as to whether it's a good price or not.
The next bidder was over 5% higher, though, weren't they?
Last year?
Yeah.
Last year, we had three bids. One was slightly under but unqualified, Brickman, and then the third bidder was $134,500. Two years ago, we had a bid close to $200,000. Again, you could argue that that wasn't a very good bid either. They maybe overestimated some things, but...
Okay.
I think it's important that we're looking at building relationships too. That, like, they now have experience, they know us, they, we know them. We have a working relationship with them, and that's something that, you know, 5%, 5.7% is a lot of money, but you have to retrain the next company, and that's going to cost more than $5,000.
Okay. So I think we can move forward with that.
Bring this back to you on Monday, then.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, move on to Item D this evening, which is the Naturalized Basin Program Independent Quality Assurance Analysis. And I think we have a few presentations at this point, so...
I'm going to jump up here if I can get the ball rolling. As all of you know, we've had an ongoing naturalized basin planting and maintenance program. It's been very successful. We feel it's been very successful. I was having a conversation with President Brawley this past summer, and we, the discussion about how do we measure that quality and how do we show that we are maintaining or increasing our quality when needed? How can we demonstrate that to the public? One element that we'd incorporated into our current 2013 contract with PISO, that was maintained our basins, was to do annual monitoring reports. So, part of the goal was to analyze the basins and measure them against our own standards as we have in our, our natural planting guidelines, as well as some industry standards. In addition, and again, with President Brawley's suggestion, we pursued an independent consultant who could give us an unbiased, independent opinion on that. Again, it's, you know, as a group, we've looked at these basins a lot, we've become familiar with them, we know how they look. So we thought bringing in a fresh set of eyes would be good practice, for one thing. Hopefully, it will yield what we think is that, that we have high-quality basins and that we're, we're moving in the right direction. So, to that end, we had engaged Paul Ballinger of Ballinger Environmental to do an independent analysis and report for us. We have also had Ecology+Vision, which is a partner with PISO and Associates. They've done our annual monitoring reports this year, so both Mr. Ballinger and Andy Starr are here tonight to present their findings. So, if I could just take a moment, and I'll introduce both gentlemen before they speak, and then we'll give their presentations. Our first presenter this evening is Paul Ballinger. He's President of Ballinger Environmental Incorporated. In addition to his duties as President, Mr. Ballinger has served as the firm's ecologist and chief environmental scientist. Paul also has additional experience as a wetland specialist and a botanist. He holds a bachelor of science degree in biology and environmental science from the University of Wisconsin, and a master's degree in biology from Northern Michigan University. His professional experience includes over 300 wetland delineations, 50 tree surveys, 300 vegetative monitoring visits with written reports and statistical analysis, which is similar to what we have tonight, mitigation plans, management and restoration plans, floor mapping, endangered species searches, wildlife habitat evaluations, prescribed burning, and public hearings. I want to note, the last two prescribed burnings and public hearings don't happen on the same night, so, okay. Mr. Ballinger will present the results of his independent investigation on five of our stormwater basins. We tried to pick a representative cross-section of basins throughout the community, and we'll discuss his opinion of the overall basin planting quality. Our second presenter tonight will be Andy Starr. Andy's a registered landscape architect and president of Ecology+Vision LLC. Andy has over a decade of experience in ecological restoration, and previously served as general manager for PISO and Associates, where he was responsible for the design, implementation, and management of 38 award-winning private and public ecological restoration projects. So, a great track record there. As leader of Ecology+Vision, Andy focuses on successful, sustainable design and ecological consultation, and leads the company in many diverse areas, including landscape architecture, natural areas master planning, green roof planting design, wetland delineation and mitigation planning, construction observation, and vegetation monitoring and reporting. So Andy will discuss our 2013 natural areas monitoring reports, and that represents the village's quality assurance element of our program. Also in attendance with us tonight, not presenting, but in attendance is Seth Crackle. Seth is the general manager for PISO and Associates, and since 2012, Seth has coordinated PISO's performance of the village's naturalized basin program. In addition to his project management duties, he's involved in site inventory and analysis, restoration planning, contract administration, budgeting, and plan implementation. So, with that, I present Paul Ballinger.
Thanks, Mike. Boy, with that introduction, makes it sound like I do a whole lot. No, but, yeah, I've, I've done this for about 16 years. This is, the bulk of what I do is vegetative monitoring within natural areas. About 90% to 95% of my work is in the Chicago region. Within the last couple of years, I've also worked in about 14 other states as well, doing endangered plant surveys and that sort of thing. With this, with this study, we looked at five different naturalized detention basins for their natural area quality as they, the, the village of Montgomery has guidelines on, on meeting performance standards for these naturalized basins. There's, there's 15 of them. So when I went out to look at these 15, or, sorry, these five different sites, you know, I looked at the 15 different performance standards to see if they were meeting them or not. The, the five sites I looked at were Arbor Ridge, Orchard Prairie North, Foxmore, Blackberry Crossing West, and Balmoria. Am I pronouncing that right?
Balmora.
Balmora. Balmora.
Belmaray.
But what is it?
Belmaray.
Belmaray, gotcha.
Whatever you like is fine.
Want to pronounce it correctly. The, the guidelines that I followed are within the document, is this, right here, titled Naturalized Stormwater Management Facilities Design, Planting, and Management Plan Guidelines, dated January 2010. The, the purpose of the naturalized stormwater management facility is to capture stormwater. However, as an added BMP, they, they're planted with native plantings. The, the reason for that is to absorb nutrients, sediments, and pollutants. All five of these basins had three plant community zones, Emergent Wet Prairie and Upland Prairie. If you think of a detention basin, the Upland Prairie are on the highest or driest of the slopes. The Emergent, what Emergent stands for is plants emerge out of the water, so they, they basically spend their lives within standing water, or if, if there's dry down, you know, kind of like wetland vegetation, but, but basically, the, the plants are emerging out of the water. That's, comes the term Emergent. And then Wet Prairie is the transition between Upland Prairie and Emergent. Why native? I kind of wanted to present this a little bit, you know, why are we doing this? And this is kind of a classic drawing of, these are native plants. You can see really long root systems. This helps, they have soil-binding properties that help prevent erosion, help assimilate pollutants. This right here, if you can kind of see this, this is Kentucky bluegrass or lawn grass. Their roots really don't go down very far, usually quarter of an inch to a half inch, maybe an inch at the most. But the native vegetation, the roots get down really far, and that's one of the main reasons why we're, why we're going native with detention basins. I kind of wanted just to show you, like, what does a natural detention basin look like as opposed to one that, that doesn't have natural vegetation? And here, you can kind of see the difference. The one on the left is Kentucky bluegrass, the one on the right is a naturalized detention basin. Now, this doesn't always happen with lawn grass or Kentucky bluegrass, but you can see, because of that, the shallow root systems in the slide I showed before, you get slumping, which can cause erosion, and then there has to be maintenance on those detention basins. Also, you get less assimilated pollutants as well, too, because you can see there's nothing, there's no plants growing in the water, whereas the, whoops, the natural, naturalized detention basins, what's happening to prevent erosion, well, the deep roots, but also you have wave action coming from the water that slams into the shoreline. And here, you can see there's, there's no protection along the shoreline. Here, the, the wave action is dis... Here, the wave action is dissipated by the emergent vegetation. So, that's why the naturalized detention basins are more desirable. The five basins I looked at, here's the locations. The Fox River is right over here, this is Route 30, this is Galena Road. Arbor Ridge, this is the first one I'll be talking about, is just east of the Fox River. Just to give you an idea of where they're located. The 15 performance standards can kind of be summarized in the methods on what we're doing. First, what we look at is vegetative dominance. What are these three zones in each basin, what are they dominated by? The next thing we do is we do vegetative inventories. We take an inventory of every single plant that we see out there. Now, the two of these together kind of give us a picture on if the area is good or bad, because we don't want non-native species so much growing in these detention basins, again, because of their shallow root systems, but also because they can tend to be invasive, meaning that they can just take over the basin. And what this is, the C-value, when we do our inventories, the C-value stands for coefficient of conservatism. Each native plant within the Chicago region is ranked from 0 to 10, 10 being kind of the highest quality. It really means it has a narrow ecological niche, and the narrower it is, the higher the C-value number, which is 10. Something that's more common native, kind of like a weed, would have a C-value of 0. For high-quality natural areas within the Chicago region, C-values tend to be about 3.5, just to give you an idea of what's good or bad. If it's lower than 3.5, that means it has a moderate to low plant quality. The floristic quality assessment is another way to look at naturalized areas. It's an equation that these numbers are put into. The two kind of work together. The C-value is the average of, or the mean of those Cs of the plants that you've found, and the floristic quality assessment is an equation. So, you could have an area, let's just say you had an area that was dominated by invasive species, but you had one plant that was a 10. Well, your mean C-value is going to be a 10, but your FQI value, which kind of tells you a little bit more about the biodiversity, is going to be very low. So, the two kind of give you a picture of really what's going on in an area. The results, so, kind of jump into the results. This is Arbor Ridge. This is the upland prairie, this is the Mezak Prairie, and this is the emergent zone. I don't know if you can see this, but the dominant species in the uplands were big blue stem, Indian grass, and side oats grandma. These are all native species. It was pretty much at 100% native plants. The wet prairie was dominated by dark green rush, red-rooted spike rush, Dudley's rush. And the emergent zone was dominated by burr reed and common arrowhead. These, again, these are all native species. The village guidelines say that the upland prairie has to have over 75% dominance of native species. Again, you can see, this was right at 100, the wet prairie's also 75%, and the emergent has to be 50. So, you can see that all of these met the village's guidelines. Getting real quick to the C-values and the FQI, this was the number of native species that we found at the site, 57 overall. We found 62. Our native mean C was 4.0. Again, it, to be considered a high-quality natural area, is the C-value has to be over 3.5, and we had a 4.0 for the overall. And for the native FQI, I do a lot of projects with the Army Corps of Engineers and agencies, and they typically say, like, on wetland mitigation areas, that if the FQI is over 25, or if it's over 35, it's considered a high-quality natural area. So, again, 30.5, we're doing pretty good. So, Arbor Ridge, in our opinion, was a pretty high-quality area. As far as non-natives go, it was really, it was actually really hard to find non-natives out there, which is a real good sign. It really didn't have any erosion problems. It looks like muskrats may have been starting to move into the area. I think that, also, I think one of the threats, and maybe Andy can talk about this a little bit, is, because these detention basins are surrounded by homes, is either people mowing the, you know, the natural area buffers, or throwing lawn waste in there. This adds nutrients which can degrade the plant community that's currently out there. Something like this, I mean, these are, in my opinion, this is a pretty high-quality area for a detention basin. We don't typically see these. They're hard to establish, but once they're established, you know, they can be maintained. Orchard Prairie North, very similar. Again, here's the upland prairie, Mezak Prairie, and emergent zones. Again, didn't find any erosion problems. One of the guidelines, the Montgomery guidelines for naturalized basins, is you can't have a quarter meter squared area that's bare of vegetation due to erosion problems, and I really didn't see that on these sites. Again, it was dominated by native vegetation in the upland prairie, wet prairie, and emergent. Our C-value is over, is 4.3, and our native FQI, 31.7. So, again, Orchard Prairie North, really a good-looking detention basin as far as natural areas go, or naturalized detention basins go. Foxmore, again, upland prairie, Mezak, or sorry, wet prairie, and emergent zone. Again, they were, the upland prairie was dominated by big blue stem, Indian grass, and goldenrod as well. Again, these are, these are all native plants with long root systems, help prevent erosion. The wet prairie and the emergent zone also were dominated by native vegetation. One thing at Foxmore, it did look like that some cattails were coming up. It certainly didn't look like it was a problem at all. Narrowleaf cattail, even though it is a native species, can be considered an invasive species. In the village guidelines say that you can't have, you can actually have cattails, but they can't take up 20% of the emergent zone. And that's certainly not happening at, actually at any of these sites, but I did notice that there was some at Foxmore. But it did look like there was a lot of dead cattails as well. It does look like that these sites are heavily managed. Again, here's the C-value, 4.2, native FQI, 30.5. All fairly similar. It does look like they have, they were planted with similar, you know, seeding and that sort of thing, and managed very similar as well. Blackberry Crossing, the first three I showed you, it did look like that they met all of the performance standards in the guidelines. This one here didn't look like it met the guidelines, and I think one of the reasons I suspect it hasn't is because it hasn't been managed as long as the other ones. And you can certainly see that being out here. Blackberry Crossing West, I believe, has only been managed, at least it appears to be only managed for a couple of years. Now, you can tell from the other slides, you know, the tall grass vegetation. Here, you can see, this is really short, this is the, this is the upland prairie right here. It was actually dominated by sweet clover. Sweet clover actually is a non-native invasive species. The reason they call it sweet clover is because it was actually brought over here to make honey sweeter from bees. It since has escaped and kind of proliferates all over the place. It was also dominated by Kentucky bluegrass, but you did see native plants coming up, but it wasn't dominated by native vegetation. This is the same also with the wet prairie and the emergent zone. It looked like the emergent zone, it didn't have non-native species or invasives, but it just had very sparse native emergent vegetation. The Village of Montgomery guidelines say that in the emergent zone, you have to have 50% native vegetation within the emergent zone, and we just didn't have that coverage in this basin. So, looking at what we found out there, again, it looked like the upland prairie and the wet meadow didn't, and the emergent zone, none of them met the dominance guidelines. It did, though, however, if you look at the native mean C-value, we have 3.6, and the native FQI, 23.5. This is actually pretty, pretty high. Now, again, we were finding sporadic natives. You know, the natives were probably this big. They were just coming up, but we could tell what they were. So, it did look like it was, it was planted in the past, but it is going to need continued management to bring it up, but I'm confident over time that if management continues at that site, it can look like these other, these other sites. Balmoria, am I saying that right? Belmarae, that's it, Belmarae. This one, I probably like this one the best. This is the upland prairie, Mezak Prairie, and this is the emergent zone. The emergent zone, this is, this is a plant called pickerel weed. Again, going by the C-values, 0 to 10, 10 being the greatest, pickerel weed has a C-value of 10. So, you don't see it so much in the wild, but where you do, they're pretty high-quality natural areas. And here, I mean, it's growing all over the detention basin. So, in fact, if you look at this, I mean, it doesn't, it looks like a natural area. It doesn't really even have that look that it was a built detention basin, and this is kind of what we're looking for. Again, no erosion problems. I'm positive this is acting almost like a naturalized wetland area, where wetlands in the natural, or the, you know, the natural world act as the kidneys of the environment, where they filtrate these pollutants, and I'm positive that's what's happening at this site. Again, dominated by Indian grass, but also you had some native forbs, wild bergamot, yellow cone flower, stiff goldenrod, rosin weed. The tall grass prairies in this area were dominated by grasses, but they also had native forbs integrated with them, and this one, out of all of them, does show that. The wet prairie and the emergent zone, again, dominated by native vegetation, and the C-value you can see, well over 3.5, native FQI, 26.9. Again, so dominated by native vegetation, and the C-value and the FQI is pretty high. So, those are the five sites. This is just, this table here, and it's broken up into two slides, just so I can show it. These actually show what the village's guidelines are for naturalized basins. If I thought it met the performance standard, I put "met", and if I didn't think it met it, put "not met". These first couple of performance standards have to do with erosion. Again, performance standard number one, quarter meter squared, a bare area. Actually, all the, all the basins didn't have any significant bare areas, didn't have any real erosion problems. As far as ground cover goes, again, like I was saying before, the emergent zone has to have 50% natives, wet prairie and the upland prairies have to have 75%. Again, these right here meet the performance standards, and right here, the only one that really didn't, you can see these really low numbers of percentages of natural vegetation, and that was at Blackberry Crossing West. Again, this performance standard, very similar to the other ones. The ones that were not applicable are ones that are repeated site visits. Normally, like even if you do vegetative monitoring for the Army Corps of Engineers, there's a five-year performance standard criteria, mainly because right when you plant an area, some of these native plants take a couple of years to come up. They could take anywhere from three to five years. That's why we have these repeated standards. For example, the C-value and the FQI have to increase every year after year, but kind of what I was showing you in the previous slides, the C-value and the FQIs are about as high as they're going to get. I wouldn't expect them to get, to get any higher. You've pretty much reached sort of the apex of what you're going to get. So, I'm sure over time, they have progressively gone up. But again, I put "non-applicable" because we didn't sample them year after year. And again, these performance standards are saying, you know, you can't have non-natives being dominated in the top three most dominant plants, which we didn't, which we didn't at four of the sites, just, just the one. And also, this performance standard here, you can't have a plant with a C-value of two or less in the, in the most dominant. Again, the Blackberry Crossing West was the only one that we had that didn't meet that. And then the last performance standard is a long-term operation and maintenance plan must be submitted to the village, and that's, of course, something that we didn't, we didn't look at. And then, this is just some of the stuff that you have. I just kind of, with it being so cold outside, it's kind of nice to look at some sort of nice sunny pictures, I guess. So, these are some of the plants you have out here. Again, native plants, yellow cone flower, butterfly weed, rosin weed. These are native prairie vegetation that is growing at, actually at all these sites, even the one that didn't make it, again, they're starting to come up. Here's a few more. And I wanted to show this slide because it kind of shows, this is, this isn't anything in the village. This is a detention basin that's dominated by cattails. I think we all know what cattails look like, and this is what you have at Belmarae. Gosh, I still can't say it. Again, the cattails is somewhat of an invasive species. You really don't get any other plants growing within this basin. Here, you do. It's a more conservative plant species with the pickerel weed, so you actually So you actually do get other natives growing in with it, because this is what they're adapted for. So we'd rather see something like this than detention basins that are completely chock-full of, uh, of cattails. And that's it. Is there, is there any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Paul. Any questions, uh?
I got a quick, um, I need a very thorough job, and I'd, I'd like to see all our, like, Balmorea's homeowners association, get a copy of this so they can have it at some meeting, so that they can read how many muskrats were caught. And one of them, I think, four of them got caught. And, uh, I think it'd be something good that every homeowner's, because we have a lot of comments about it, and they could read what they really have. Only question I have for you is, what about the water quality? You, you're all plant species, but like Arbor Ridge, they've always said they have to dredge it. There's too much, uh, phosphorus in the water. We're going to get Pete Lives in Arbor Ridge, so we're going to get him a big stick, and he's going to beat all his neighbors to throw the cut grass in there. But that's what, the water quality is the problem, I think, in some of these. You're not really...
Yeah, I mean, that, that certainly isn't my expertise. I, I have seen sites where they have tested the, the, the water quality. I worked on a site where it was right next to, um, um, I-94, and, uh, they, they actually tested, because salt, you know, they salt the highway, it goes into the basin, and they have tested, you know, salt coming in, and then, you know, the water quality going out. And there actually was a reduction, um, you know, in the, in the salt content and pollutants. As far as dredging it, um, and, and that sort of thing, you know, I, I, I would ask, before you start dredging any of these things, you know, I would certainly ask, uh, some of the agencies, um, first of all, if you can dredge them, because you should have the, the, the right to dredge them, because that is, the purpose of these basins is to, you know, trap some of these sediments. And over time, they, they are going to fill up. And, yeah, I realize you have to keep those culverts clean and that, and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah.
Do any of the, uh, like, like Arbor Ridge, it, it used to be like 10, 12 feet deep, and now it's like four feet in some places. Do the weeds in there affect what's grown around it, or not really? Do they, they come out of the water and, uh, uh, get to the land, or not really? Just the algae?
You mean, as far as the, the vegetation going in and filling it up? I mean, I'm sure some of that is happening. I don't know if these sites are, are burned or not. Burning can help sort of get rid of some of that dead thatch. You know, the dead vegetation around these basins, it will get rid of some of that. Yeah, but, but certainly, yeah, some of that will, uh, fall into, into the basin. As far as weeds go and, and that sort of thing, um, Arbor Ridge, I mean, looked, looked real good, in that there really wasn't, there, there was some non-natives, but not, um, a whole lot of them. Certainly, all of these basins, even if they become naturalized, still have to be maintained somewhat to keep those weed populations down. They're not, um, you know, truly going to be sustainable into the future. There's always going to have to be something done, you know, whether it's a burn, or whether they're going to have to be cleaned out, um, th- th- those types of things. But, yeah, I, I, I would suspect, though, yeah, over time, I mean, that, that's what they're going to do, is they're going to continually, you know, fill up until they're, um, until they're, until they're dredged out.
Paul, there's a high aquatic weed, uh, population in there, and there's also a history of algae and algae control, so there's probably quite a bit of muck built up in the bottom.
Okay, sure. Okay, and, and maybe Andy can address that a little bit more, because I think he's seen the sites a little bit longer than I have. And he'll talk a little bit more about the, the restoration that's going on and, and that sort of thing.
Okay, excellent. I appreciate it. If there are any other questions? I think this serves as a, is a really excellent spot check of what we have going on right now with, with our contract with PISO. And it's kind of nice to sit up here and listen to you tell us in very, uh, great detail that the four of the basins are excellent. I mean, it sounds like those four basins are doing exactly what we wanted them to do, and what, what PISO's maintaining them to do, so...
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. You know, I, I look at a lot of basins and wetland mitigation sites and these types of things, and it seems that a lot of these are pretty junky. And the, the reason is, is because, um, you know, we're really trying to force-feed these native plants within areas that aren't really natural. You know, I'm sure they have clay liners with topsoil on top, and that's not what these plants are adapted for. But it takes a lot of time and sort of tender-loving care to get these things into place. And to see, you know, four of these five, tho- the way that they are, you know, was, uh, was really nice to see. Yeah, they're, uh, in real good shape. And I, and they certainly match the spirit of the Montgomery Guidelines as far as, uh, native or naturalized basins go.
Excellent. Blackberry Crossing is not meeting the standards, but it sounds like it's on track to be.
Right.
Just needs a little more time.
Yep, exactly, exactly, yeah. It, it looks like, to me, it looks like a basin that was newly created and, like, just planted. And when you do that, for example, you, you know, you dig a hole to make a detention basin, and then you start planting it with the plants that you want there. Right away, that's, that, that's not going to happen, because you get what's called pioneer species. These pioneers come in, you know, which are your weeds. These are the ones that, you know, the seed drops on the ground and they germinate instantly. And those are the ones that, you know, that we're, you know, trying to combat, because we want the, 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 obviously, the, the native plants there. So, in an area that's newly created, I think it's, it's always, the first couple of years is the biggest struggle. But once you get those natives in there, it's tough to get those pioneer species in there, because you don't have this sort of, uh, clean slate. It's like when you have, oh, gosh, it seems like when you have a clean slate like that, the pioneer species, uh, come in. And, uh, yeah, it's, it, it's a lot of work at the beginning, especially with invasives. But, but over time, you know, you can get the natives to, uh, to establish. It's, it's, it's kind of typically what, what happens with trying to, uh, you know, create these natural areas.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, next will be Andy Starr, and Andy's going to focus, I think, on the, on the five same basins. We did reports for all 26 or so of our basins. We're not going to go through each of those reports this evening, but, unless you want. But, uh, I think, Andy, I'd asked him to, to focus on the same five that Paul had done, again, so we could compare our own analysis and opinion to the independent opinion. So, with that, Andy Starr?
Yeah, so I'll go over the five that Paul went over. And I do have a summary chart of, of the rest of the basins. And I'll just do a really quick run-through of that. A couple of clarifications. Paul did a good job of kind of explaining FQI and C value, and how we utilize those. I want to make sure you understand, there's a couple of different methods to monitoring vegetation. One is a meander survey, which is what me and Paul have done, where we've simply just walked through the areas and write down everything that we see. So it's a little more subjective in nature, where it's up to the person actually doing the monitoring to catch the different plants. And then there's, um, transect surveys, where we actually put a line that's a permanent transect, and we use quadrants, either quarter meter or a one-meter section. And you go along regular, uh, or random, uh, lengths of that transect, and you monitor basically the same one-meter square each time you go out there. So you're getting a very defined, very objective set of data that you can compare against, whether it's me or Paul or whoever. We're all, we're looking at the same vegetation. So, um, that obviously has a lot more man-hours tied to it and costs a lot more money, so that's not what we're doing here. Uh, the reason I bring that up is how we use data from a meander survey is important. It's really up to us to, to evaluate the site, put our recommendations together, on what we've seen based on our knowledge and our experience, and then use meander survey data to back that up and say, you know, we're not blowing a bunch of BS. But we can't look at that data exclusively without any other, um, uh, insight. So I just wanted to make that clear. What it's really good for is, like I said, verifying our findings, uh, from the, from the subjective visual observations. And it's also very helpful to have that data so that we can compare year to year to year. So we have at least a set of data that we can go back and point to, and see if we're moving in the right direction or in the wrong direction. So that, that is where it's very helpful. Another, so this is the, the first basin I'm going to cover is Arbor Ridge. Boy, this is going to be really hard to see, isn't it? Can you hear me if I talk about the noise?
I think so. Let's try it. If you can't hear, let me...
I can't see it from there. So, um, one of the, one of the things that we also look at is when you, when you, uh, come up with FQI data and C value data, you look at native FQI, native C value, and you also look at total FQI and total C value. So native FQI is just evaluating all the native plants around the site. Is it on? So, um, native FQI and C value is only looking at the native plants that are on the site. Total includes native plants and non-native plants. So the numbers that Paul were, were showing you were native FQI and native C value numbers. So it, it may not be a real clear representation of how the site is performing overall, because it's excluding any weed content in those numbers. So what we have here, um, and this, this will be in, uh, in the reports that we had done, but there's, uh, the native, so we have the total C and the total FQI, and this is the native C and the native FQI. So on Arbor Ridge, if we look at the native mean C is 4.4, and I think, what did you have, um, Paul had 4.0. So we're really close here on our native FQI. But when I include weed content, the, the total C value is a 3.2, which is still really good if we're looking at a, at total. We'd like to see it at a three or above. Paul said a 3.5 or above for native, uh, FQI. So we're doing really well as far as the C values go here. Number of total species we found was 67. Paul, you had found 62. So we're, yeah, we're very, very similar in our, in our findings here. Some of the things that we found in our assessments, there is curly-leaf pond weed in Arbor Ridge, so that's something, that's an invasive aquatic weed that's going to have to be managed. And that's going to be important coming up this year. Treatment on that should start around in, in April, so it's a pretty early treatment regime. We still are dealing with, um, trampling of plants, getting down to, to fish, in, in that basin, so that continues to be a struggle. That creates areas of potential erosion. And then this is difficult to see, but that's turf grass clippings that have been piled up around one of the trees that are planted there. So we are dealing with some homeowner encroachment at Arbor Ridge that continues to be an issue out there as well. Balmorea. Again, if we look at the similar numbers for, for what Paul was looking at, we were at a 3.8 for native mean C, and he is at 4.3. We look at it without, uh, with the total na- uh, total mean C, we're at 3.7. We had found 47 species. Paul, you had 45. So we're, we're pretty close on, on all those. Some of the things that we're finding at Balmorea, more, more aesthetic than anything, I guess, these are the lot lines here, so this is where the turf grass starts for the homes. And then this is the native vegetation. And then there's kind of a no-man's land in here, where I think it may have been planned as lomo fescue. It hasn't been maintained that way, so some of the natives and parts have jumped over. Some of the homeowners have kept it, um, mown. So you can see this is taller vegetation down here, and this is being mown. So, um, that's something that we need to pick one way or the other, and reestablish that buffer or, um, bring it into native. So this is a couple of examples of where that's happening. And then the, along, uh, the main road here, there's some, uh, traditional landscape areas where the native landscaping has gotten in, inside of the, the junipers here. They're starting to get into the turf grass as well. So that's something to talk to the landscape contractor about, trying to ke- keep that cleaned up. Blackberry Crossing Unit 2, uh, like Paul said, this is not performing to the standard. And just to clarify, the standard is the five-year standard, and this is, I think, the second year after installation. But e- even that being said, it's not performing really well to a second-year standard as well. So, um, I know our recommendation was to completely reseed this, and Seth, was that done this fall?
Yes, we did. We followed the base when we drilled seeded it. There's probably still a certain percentage that would benefit to reseed again in the future. But it has been, when we took steps this fall to, uh, to reseed it again.
So again, just comparing numbers, uh, we were at 4.0 with the native mean C. Paul, in this one, you were at 3.6. Looking at total mean C, we're at 2.8. So that's a better representation of where we're at. We're below that 3.0 where we'd like to be. So that informs our decision-making a little better. So these are some examples of what's happening out there. There is some erosion happening. There's quite a, quite a few areas where the erosion is more than six inches, um, deep. So that's something that we'll have to address in upcoming years. And this is just an example of how thick the weed content is out there, and why we recommended it needed to be redone, um, because it, the native content was not dominant at all. Foxmore West. So again, just looking at native mean C was 4.2. Paul, you were at 4.2, so we were right on with that. The total mean C, on the other hand, is 3.2. So there's a little bit of weed content in there that we had caught. Total amount of species, we had 68, and you had 63, so we're...
And I just want to say, too, that with the native mean C and the C values, is the reason I did the native mean C was because that's what some of the, the Village of Montgomery got.
Right.
That's, that's why I presented it the way it is.
What we really saw here, um, this year compared to past years, was a, a really explosion in the emergent zone, um, on Foxmore. And I contribute it, contribute that to muskrat trapping the last year or two that's been implemented. And, um, we've just seen an explosion in, uh, the emergent populations. There are mostly on the north side, some areas where there's, um, this is still a native plant, but it's an annual native, takes, uh, advantage of disturbance. So there's some areas you can see in here where the permanent vegetation isn't well-established. So those are some areas that still need some work at Foxmore. Orchard Prairie North. Again, the native mean C, we're at 5.0. You're at 4.3, Paul. Total is at 3.9. So it's a really, really nice, um, performing basin. The biggest thing that we're battling out at Orchard Prairie North is Tall Goldenrod or Canada Goldenrod. There's a, um, I wouldn't say a lot of it throughout, but i- in local areas. And so you can see what PISO's been doing this year is killing a lot of that off. So this is, these are areas where Tall Goldenrod or other weedy species were present. You can see little pockets of it here along the pathway. So they've been treating that, and then, I don't know if that was seeded or planted this fall, or if it will be done next spring. But that's what our recommendation was, is to, um, completely kill those areas off and redo them. You can see the, where there was some natives, like a little, um, milkweed and a compass plant, they saved those. But otherwise, it all got, uh, redone. And then this is, again, that lomo fescue area. Some of these areas are underperforming and need some additional seeding. So here's, here's all the, all the basins, all 26 of them. Really difficult to read. I guess, um, what I'll point out, just in summary, is if we're looking at the total mean C, and that's a, a real indicator of performance, we want everything to be at 3.0 or above. The only ones that are not meeting that currently are the Balmorea comp, which just came into, um, the village's, uh, control. And, um, I know there needs to be some reseeding done in that basin. These three are the Blackberry Crossing West basins that just came in two years ago. These three are the Blackberry Crossing West basins that just came in two years ago and were reseeded, so they're definitely not ready to meet the five-year criteria. And this is Orchard Road Expansion, which, again, was just reseeded this year, so it's brand-new. So those are really the only ones not meeting that 3.0 or above. This goes through all the performance criteria. Most are being met. The ones that aren't being met mainly are due to erosion issues, and most of the erosion, I should say, almost all the erosion issues are contributed to our little friends, the muskrat. So this is, I wanted to show you some of the more severely damaged areas that we're finding, and it's caused by muskrat burrows. So this is what they do. They burrow down underneath the water and create a burrow, and then the soil, over time, collapses into their nest. This is out at Montgomery Crossing Mayfield. So you can see how much damage they can really do to a shoreline here. This is all due to one muskrat burrow. This is Montgomery Crossing's at Deer Path. So you can see, again, where these guys come in, and then that, the soil collapses where their burrows are. This is at Civic Center. So again, you can see how far up slope these come, because they burrow in and then the soil collapses in. Civic Center again. And this is at Civic Center, again, one of the reasons it's not meeting a bare-soil criteria, but this is the sports field that was put in, and all that drainage from the sports field when they're constructing it caused all this erosion. So that's a big contributor to the Civic Center on that erosion issue. With that, I will open up questions for me, Paul, or Mike, or Seth.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you have any questions from the board? It was a lot about basins this evening, a lot more than we usually get, so...
Lakewood Creek is not part of this.
Correct.
Because that's maintained by HOA.
Yeah.
That's correct, yes. They maintain their own basin.
Do we check it to make sure that it's meeting the village standard at all? If they're not part of this, how do you know if they're meeting the standard or not?
It's part of our program. Is there, look to Jared, I guess I'd have to review the guidelines to see what the requirements are, but it's not included as part of our annual program.
You must have muskrats out there, I would presume.
There's a lot of them.
Wasn't it 212 where we had 22-trapped muskrats or something like that?
It's pretty common every year.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of muskrat.
You can see how much damage they can do.
Yeah.
In a real short amount of time. So it's an important part of the program.
I was the president of an HOA previously, and we had fountains for our basin, and they ate right through the steel caging. I mean, I don't know of an animal that eats through steel, but they did.
Yeah, they're amazing.
To the tune of about $5,000.
They're an amazing little animal, yeah. A real pain in our side.
Could we discuss burns for a moment?
Sure.
There were some references in these reports to burn intervals. And I just kind of wanted to get an opinion, since we have some expertise here tonight. Every other year, every three years, every five years, what looks to be a good value burn schedule?
Ecologically, every two to three years is kind of the natural cycle. A two-to-five-year period is when a burn would have naturally occurred historically. So that's really the regime ecologically. But we have aesthetic issues that we're also dealing with here, because they are urbanized natural areas. So in the event that we don't get a basin burned, the spring wildflowers aren't as visible through the existing biomass, whereas if it's burned off, that biomass is gone, the spring wildflowers are very visible. So there's an aesthetic issue to it as well. There may be some, I'd say vermin concerns, too, if we don't keep it burned. Burning exposes the soil, so you have things like mice and snakes that are exposed to hunting owls and hawks, and it keeps those populations under control. Voles, too, are a big issue that burning can help. So there's some issues with that as well. And then we also are trying to balance the aesthetic value of the basins with increasing wildflower diversity. So the timing of the burning is important as well. We're trying to do as much, or our recommendation is to have as many of the burns done in the fall as possible, so that we get a, that's more beneficial to the wildflowers, whereas a spring burn is more beneficial to the grasses and can actually reduce some of the wildflower content. Not to say that that's a direct correlation, you know, if we have to burn it in the spring, fine, but we would rather have a rotation where we have the majority of the burns done in the fall. If we have to move one or two to the spring just to get the burn done, that's fine, but it's more beneficial if we can have them done in the fall.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions of Andy or Paul at this point?
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, President Brawley. And I guess for me, just quickly, and I know we need to move on, but the takeaway from this is that I think the independent review has validated what we thought of our program and our own consultant's opinion of it. Again, it's a cross-section of the basins, it's certainly not every one, but I think their opinions and ratings are in line, not only for the good basins. It'd be very easy to say, just go look at these basins, because we know they're good. I intentionally picked Blackberry West Unit 2 because it's a new basin. We knew it had problems. And again, I think that the independent report, as it coincides with our own consultant's reports, is, again, verifies that we're on the right path. And so again, that's what I really took away from this. So thank you all for your time tonight. I know it was a lot of information, but hopefully it was beneficial to you.
Yeah, and I was just going to kind of reiterate what you said. I understand the meandering surveys and the numbers aren't going to be exact. I think generally what we saw is that two independent visits, we had consultants that basically said the same thing, which is exactly what I had hoped when we were talking about doing this. I feared that, you know, that it could be the other way. But, I mean, based on what we've heard previously, and then this confirms it tonight, that we have a stellar program. And I think it's important for our residents, we get questions about the basins with the amount of money that they're, I mean, they're funding the stewardship and the plantings every year. That's our SSA's. So I think this'll go a long way. I don't know that anybody's going to read through the detail of the, you know, species count and that, but for what it's worth, I appreciate both of you guys and your service. With that, we'll move on to item E this evening, which is the detention basin management contract and the RFP process moving forward. Mike, if you can give us kind of an update of the history of this, where we started with the current contract that we have with PISO?
Certainly. PISO has been working with the village since 2007. In 2010, we developed and issued our first request for proposals. There's a desire at that time to go out for bids, is kind of a term thrown around. This is, quite honestly, a very difficult process to go out and do a traditional unit cost bid, but we made an attempt at it. We did get five or six, I believe, submittals. We interviewed contractors or consultants and ended up recommending PISO to continue the program. The board at that time accepted that. We've since then extended their contract one time, I believe. So their current contract, that they're under-expired at the end of 2013. So that's how we, that's where we're at. That's the history of it, of our consultants to date. So again, based on conversations somewhat by this board, a lot by the previous board makeup, again, there is a desire to look at a bidding process. We know that we had some challenges the first time we did it, primarily with the, just a quite varied scope of what each consultant thought the expected output was. And what we saw was, were cost numbers that widely varied also, because they weren't really the apples-to-apples type of comparison. So with that in mind, I've started working on revising the RFP to try to give more discreet and detailed descriptions of what the work output is and what the expectations for staffing are, what the frequency of visit would be. Again, so hopefully, I don't think we'll get it 100%, but hopefully anybody that is interested will have a clearer understanding or a clearer understanding of the level of effort required, which in turn will hopefully result in proposals that you can more easily compare next to each other. So that's one option the board has, is continuing down that process, issuing an RFP, taking all those submittals, and then selecting a vendor from that. There's also the option of waiving bid and continuing with the consultant we have now. So I've been working towards the RFP process. That was the last direction that I had, but there's more than one option.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any opinion whether or not we change direction on that, or...
I think we should go out for bid.
Okay.
Yeah, I can agree with Pete, too. I'm still questioning the bid process, like Kimball, the basin at Kimball, I think a park district is going to take that over eventually, is that correct?
Kimball?
Well, you know, the, one of Montgomery Road and...
Montebano.
Yeah.
There's a park there that I think they're taking over. I don't believe they're taking it over.
They're not going to take over the basin, okay.
Right now, they're HOA.
I had residents go in there with me and actually Matt, and they said, that's a weed, that's a weed. There's more weeds in here than plants, and this whole basin hasn't been taken care of, and blah, blah. And I wasn't real familiar, although I could see some of what they were talking about. I don't know how you're going to bid...
It's not in our program.
Pardon?
That basin is not in our program.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
That's it, I guess. But how would you bid something like that that's just starting out so, I mean, that's not a very old basin.
Let, excuse me, Jared, let me add this, and if you want to comment. That was one of the reasons for doing the annual monitoring reports, which is what Andy presented, basically. They went out in the spring and then again in the fall, and now we've got documented quality of each of the basins. So those will be included as exhibits with the RFP. So anyone that looks at it should at least know, here's where I'm starting from, and here's the village's standards as published in their guidelines, and that's the target. So their job will then be to say, here's the effort I need to put in this year, or maybe over multiple years to do that. So if that basin were coming into our system, ideally, we would go out and do a review of it and say, here's the quality level. The next time someone submitted a bid or, you know, pricing to maintain it, they'd have a good understanding of where it's starting from and the distance it needs to go to get up to the standards.
Okay.
There's a procurement tactic used by the federal, at the federal level. I think it's called request for qualification or sources sought. And that might be appropriate in this case, before we went to the level of effort that a full RFP or RFQ might involve. It's a fairly new industry, really, and it's still possible for companies that have very little idea what they're doing to present themselves as though they do. And we've seen, I've seen personally, the difference between a landscaping firm that said, sure, I can do that, and the caliber of support that we've gotten from the vendor we have. And it cost us quite a bit of time and money to turn some of these basins around that were poorly managed. So if there is a desire for competitive assessment in this regard, I'm not sure I share that, because we are obviously getting a very high-quality product, and year over year, our cost for it has been declining. But maybe we would begin with, who are the firms that have the qualifications that we say we want? Or let's say that we have now. Can they document that? Can they demonstrate that? And from that pool, then we might proceed with developing a quote. But if you just ask for a price, all of that stuff kind of gets shoved in the back of the proposal, when in fact, in our case, it's the important part. What expertise are you really going to bring? It might be five years before we know that our quality has deteriorated, if we're only going to do these reports every five years. And we will get ourselves in a situation where we have to spend a fair bit of money and effort, again, to just catch up to where we are now, or where we should have been five years from now, so...
If I can comment, trustee, the process we use now is a bit of a hybrid. We do have qualifications, criteria in the language, but it's a hybrid in the sense that, again, at one point, whether that still exists or not, there's a strong desire to try to make this a unit-cost bid project, and it just doesn't fit that model very well. So in 2010, we asked for proposals that said, here are our qualifications, and here's our approach to the work, and, you know, other items you typically see in a request for qualifications, which, my understanding, when you do an RFQ, you do not, there is no cost element. So you're selecting based on qualifications, then you negotiate a price with them. So again, the past history was, there was a strong desire to try to put this into the low bid box, and it's challenged. So when we brought it back last time, staff recommendation was not the lowest price, because I felt at that time that that consultant, although a fine consultant, didn't quite understand or capture what we were trying to do.
I think that, I think Stan's right. Back in 2007, I think it was, we put it out, and we had landscaping companies that said, hey, I can take so many thousands of these little plants, and I can have a guy go through and stick them down there fastening, you can do it. And it's one of those that you really, we only have, there's only a couple, I think, that you're going to find that are qualified to do that good a basin work.
There's some very qualified companies out there, for sure. There are some very unqualified companies, too. They may be very qualified to mow lawns or to maintain entry monuments and things like that, but they are not qualified for this. So I don't want to give the impression that the industry is lacking in qualified companies. They're out there. And my guess is that they will know of this and bid on it. It's, I think, a pretty desirable project and contract to have. But again, the challenge is when we combine our desire to select highly qualified, but attach a low bid element to it. I think it's going to put us in the same situation where the, if we chose by qualifications, we'd choose this; if we chose by price, we'd choose that. And so the decision will be there.
But I think based on the quality of the spot check that we've seen this evening, that modified RFQ that we did three years ago seemed to have worked in our favor. Obviously, the maintenance that's occurred on those basins has been good, but I think it's important for us as a board to do our due diligence on this every number of years and that we're not awarding a no-bid contract indefinitely. This has been six years with one firm, and so that's where the direction come from, came from the board previously on this, so...
My ignorance, for when PISO's doing these seedings, is that included in the contract or is that a separate billable item?
That's included in the contract.
That's included in the contract. So as time goes by, with these basins that are based on the results we saw this evening, there's several basins that are new that have had plantings and need additional plantings, but our costs are going down gradually, is the gist of what I, because they become a little bit more self-maintained?
Yeah, they're going down. They went down significantly. I wouldn't say gradually. I mean, I can resurrect the slide from a few presentations that showed drops in percentages in the teens and twenties. I mean, and that's not just because of the, you know, of PISO. They do a great job. Some of it is the nature of how these basins work, that they're high initial cost but low long-term cost, because once you get them to meet your standards, your maintenance is basically spot weed control, trash pickup, and monitoring to make sure everything's...
And burns.
And burns, right. Where a basin that's early in its life, like Blackberry West Unit 2, still needs a lot of nurturing and work and time to get it to the point you want it.
So I think at some point, these basins will level off at a cost, and from my standpoint, from a resident's standpoint, the, you know, few hundred dollars on their SSA that goes on their tax bill every year, obviously, we try and buffer that and keep that relatively stable, but it'll go down to a point and level off and...
Mm-hmm.
All right. If there aren't any other comments, I think you have direction on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time and attention tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll move on to plan commission recommendations. And I believe that senior planner Chipman, I apologize for leaving that off before. I was gonna handle these this evening, so.
All right, thank you very much. Coming before you at the board meeting on Monday will be one plan commission item. The plan commission recommended a six to zero in favor of. And this item is a special use for a motor vehicle service with some associated outdoor storage. And this use is proposed on, just off of Route 31, basically just north of the Caterpillar Plant, so on the village's southern border. It is currently a legal non-conforming structure. It's a house, and it's been zoned business for quite some time. And White Eagle Auto Body, who is currently located next door to, to this house, would like to move over one parcel and construct their new facility. The plans have been attached to the plan commission packet for your review. There are very minor outstanding items. However, one major outstanding item is the permission from IDOT, giving permission for them to utilize certain drainage specifications that they present to IDOT, as well as access on one existing gravel driveway. So, once they have permission from IDOT to proceed, then we will be ready to move forward with the project. That being said, all of the other items are very small. The plan commission did discuss the fencing in the rear of the site. Staff was in support of a wooden fence. However, the plan commission recommended a black vinyl-coated chain-link fence for the rear of the site. With that, I would ask if there are any questions.
I was at the meeting, and I agree with the planning commission on the fence. You have, Foxher Foods has a big metal fence, right? They're gonna use part of that, they said, for their border. And I don't see why we'd have to have wood fence when it's already chain-linked and black-chain-linked. I think they said covered would be fine. And I think the plan commission did a good job on that as far as letting them match up with the surrounding area rather than start something fancy that you really don't need.
Some of us don't appear to have the drawings in our packets. Can we arrange to get those before the next...
Were they in this packet?
They were in the planning commission packet.
Sorry, they are typically not in the committee of the whole packet as those packets are put together prior to the plan commission meeting.
Yep, and I do remember seeing it there.
But it's usually included in the village board?
Yes.
Okay, so you have it.
So, were there any changes from what was in the planning commission packet to what we'll see?
There were a few minor changes, especially since the landscape, excuse me, the landscape package has changed significantly. And that updated landscape package can be found on the website. If you go to the plan commission packet, there's a more recent landscape package than what is in this packet.
I, I don't feel like I was prepared to discuss that tonight because it wasn't in our agenda. Maybe that's just me. But maybe we should agree that if it's gonna be on the agenda, it should be in, as part of the agenda.
We can include the, the item that you put in for plan commission in the committee of the whole. I guess that way, if there's no recommendation, then we'll have stuff in our board packet that we're not gonna discuss, but we can figure something out.
Just logistically, we usually haven't had it in the committee of the whole packet, but have had it. You get the plan commission packet, and then we put the results that come out in the board meeting packet.
Right.
Because with the meeting being Thursday, and this agenda came out Thursday afternoon.
Agreed, the timing's a little...
Yeah, I just saved mine this time because last time I did the same thing, so. Well, that being said, do you want to put this on for items for separate action on Monday? So, that way, if there are any questions, trustee Youngerman can ask some questions too. Are there any other questions this evening or clarification that you might need? Jared, did you have anything else on this, on this one? Okay. And is that all for plan commission?
The plan commission table, another item, and then discussed community signage as well as the library kiosks. And they've given us great direction. We will be bringing forward a staff report to them in February for a recommendation to come before you.
Okay, move on. Department updates, turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you. Just comment before I turn over to the chief. If you'll recall, at Monday's meeting, John Amen came, got up and discussed his intention to participate in the 2014 backyard bird count. I was looking to the village for support generally in providing a building for before-and-after and for helping to promote it. John did come in and meet with Debbie this week. She has prepared a press release that we're gonna put out, asking for volunteers, giving details. The village will be providing the space, and we will be providing refreshments for before-and-after. John's gathering the volunteers, and is gonna do all the management of the activity. And it is set for Saturday, February 15th, from about 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. So, I just wanted to let you know that we did follow his, his request and are moving forward with that. And then I would turn it over to Chief Myers.
Thank you very much. Last Wednesday, I, I attended the Kendall County Operations Board meeting. In November of 2013, we had 992 cat tickets. In December of 2013, we had 993 cat tickets. So, we're on, we're on schedule for our prediction for, for the year. Second of all, January is a big training month for us. We train in CPR, AED training, first aid, and we've also added the self-aid buddy care training this year. So, that's where we, we brought in the DEA and they treat, or they teach us basic life support for helping wounded or injured officers during, during their shift. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Director Poobens?
Thank you. As you know, from driving around, there are a lot of potholes out. We've contacted IDOT in regards to some of them. We've also worked with Debbie Buchanan to put the IDOT District One telephone number. If you hit a pothole on a state route, you can contact that number, and they will start their claims process if applicable. So, that's on the website and on our Facebook page. During the recent snowstorms, we have had some mailbox damage, 26 mailboxes. Our policy is that we'll send a staff member out there. If it's a simple fix, just a few screws here and there, takes less than 15 minutes or so, we'll fix it on the spot. Seven of those were like that. So, we have 19 mailboxes that are eligible for our reimbursement program. If you recall, the village will reimburse up to $50 towards the cost of repair or replacement of a damaged mailbox. So, if you get any calls, that's the background. If you get any calls from people inquiring, you can direct them to Public Works, and we can help them out, so. And then lastly, just to thank you, we've had some temperature cycles here. So, we've had a lot of snow, and then we had some melting. A number of residents, about a week or so ago, went outside and found where the street drains were at and uncovered them on their own. That's tremendously helpful to us. So, I don't have a list of names, but I'd just like to thank them generally and encourage everyone if they can do that. It's a tremendous help to us, helps prevent localized flooding in your streets and driveways. And, you know, we had people out trying to do the same thing, but, so, thank you to the public. That's all I have.
All right. Director Young?
Thank you. Well, it's been an interesting couple of weeks as I get my feet wet here, but a couple of things I'd like to talk to you on. We are working on the comp plan draft. Many of you have participated in, in the open house and workshop that we had last Thursday, so I appreciate that effort. Jared's done a great job with the consultants to relay comments that are received, and they've been incorporated in the maps that are associated with the comp plan as well as the text itself. So, we're looking forward to taking this to the plan commission with a second revision of the draft very shortly. Jared and I are also looking at some zoning code text amendments that we'll be bringing forward to the plan commission, then ultimately here to the village board. Briefly, there was a report that I will publish to all board members related to permits for all of 2013. There were over 1,080 permits issued last year in the village. 24 of those were new single-family homes, so just for your knowledge there. We've had a couple of meetings with Shar at the MEDC. We're looking at putting together updated inventory of properties that are available, square footage for both commercial and retail that are available as we look at going forward and marketing the village, as well as updating some of our demographic information so that we have that readily available when primarily retailers are... My experience is that that's what retailers like, like to see. So, we're looking at how we accomplish that. And finally, I'm looking at some grant opportunities, primarily through the Kane County Riverboat Funds. The grant apps will be coming out in February with an April deadline, so we'll look at some grant opportunities and bring those forward to the board as time goes on, and the deadline for that submittal takes place in April. So, that's it for now. Thank you.
All right. That's our update. Excellent. Thank you. Is there any new or unfinished business to come this evening?
I have one for director Young. Welcome, by the way. Hopefully, things are going smoothly. Do we do anything as far as marketing the village? It just, it strikes me that I, I drive home, I listen to WGN, and the village of Bedford Park, if I'm out on the road during the day, I bet they run 30 commercials a day on there. And I'm just wondering, it just made me think about what marketing efforts do we do? Not that, you know, the radio would be one for us, but what marketing efforts do we do to try to, if there's industrial publications or... Are we involved in that at all for marketing, trying to drive traffic to the village?
I'm not aware of any specific print ads, marketing through different magazines or industry magazines. Obviously, the Bedford Park, I've heard those same ads. I guess the whole village of Bedford Park is a TIF district?
They have great water.
Yeah, they have great water. That's obviously a very expensive proposition to, when you get into media like that, to advertise. But I think one of the things that, as Shar and I work together, I think we'll, we'll roll out a number of different ideas on things that, including marketing. And I don't have any specific plans at this point in time, but I think it's a, it's an element that we'll have to look at as how, how do we market the village?
I just wanna see if it's on our radar to do that.
Anything else?
Actually, I've had a resident, several residents now, and I've actually had conversation with Chief Meyer about this previously regarding the, the addition of the tower, the siren, the additional siren, and the fact that it would be located in Kendall County, but it would still trip with our sirens that are tripped from Aurora in Kane County. And it, I'm trying to wrap my head around the logistics behind why that would be, that we would have residents in Kendall County responding to a siren that was being tripped in Kane County. It just, the, the logic there's, I'm trying to wrap my head around that. If we put that siren in, that it's gonna trip, not in the county that it's in. And as I've been questioned by three different residents now about that conversation of the siren.
Is there, there is no trip, I mean, there is no siren in Kendall, is there?
No, but when we add...
Yeah, I know.
If we add that siren, it would be tripping.
Who would trip it? In other words, if, if there is no siren in that area at all, it'd have to be Dan tripping it then, because...
Well, it could be part of the Kendall County system. I mean, but our thing was, since they're all done by Aurora now, we'd like all the villages to be triggered at once, I believe, rather than part here, part there. I mean, that was our goal is that, because it's gonna move through the village. And our concern is if Kendall, when Kendall County trips, it trips all of Kendall County. And so, it may be far from the village, and our sirens are going off. If it trips, you know, if Aurora trips ours, we Kane, we figure it's local here to the village, and we just assumed trip 'em all at once. I don't know if you...
Kendall could be newer, couldn't it?
No, you're correct. And if, if Kane is, if the city of Aurora is activating the siren, most likely Kendall County will be activating theirs also. And you also have to remember that this agreement and these sirens were put in before a lot of that growth out southwest.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there isn't anything else, we don't have executive session tonight. And so, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Heinz, seconded by trustee Marisak. Take the role, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes.
Trustee Spurley?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.